Good morning and welcome to this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council. My name is Barb Johnson and I am council president and I'm joined this morning by my colleague, Councilmember Jacob Frye. And before we do our council meetings, at times we have the ability to recognize important milestones in our community, important people that have done spectacular things for our city. And this morning we have the pleasure of honoring a couple groups of young people, which is always the best thing to be able to do. And the first that we have is the De La Salle Boys Basketball Team, who won their sixth straight state basketball championship. And as I was pointing out, there are four classes in the basketball championship and the city won three out of the four. De La Salle, North, and Minnehaha Academy Teams all won their class. And so it was really unusual that we did that well. But I think it would be great if the team had come up here and join us. And we have a resolution. I'm going to turn this over to my colleague, Councilmember Jacob Frye. And come on up, guys, and get in either side here so your parents can see you on TV. It's probably not such a big deal. You guys are stars already, but anyway. All right.
All right, Joe.
All right.
Hold this for now. For the picture. All right, guys. Well, you know, this has really become an annual tradition at this point that I perhaps love more than any other annual tradition we have here at the city of Minneapolis, which is inviting the De La Salle Basketball Team back for what is now their sixth straight state championship. And that is extraordinary. Now, you know, I like winning, but I love domination even more. And this is pure dominance. So I'm so proud to have you guys here in City Hall. I'm even prouder to have you in the Third Ward. And I'm going to go ahead and read this resolution right now in your honor. So this is honoring De La Salle High School Boys Basketball 2017 Minnesota Class AAA State Champions. Whereas, De La Salle High School of Minneapolis won its sixth straight Minnesota Class 3A State Championship on March 25th, defeating Austin 72 to 44. And whereas, De La Salle is the first high school in the 105-year history of the Minnesota State Tournament to win six straight boys championships. The 2016-17 team finished with a record of 27 and 3 and were champions of Section 6 AAA prior to winning the state tournament. And whereas, head coach Dave Thorson finished with a career record of 527 wins and 136 losses in his 23 years at De La Salle. The school qualified for 15 state tournaments, won nine titles, and finished as runner-up twice. Going back to 1927, De La Salle Boys Basketball Teams have qualified for 48 state tournaments and won 23 state championships. And whereas, the team represents a microcosm of the entire De La Salle student body, the most diverse private high school in Minnesota, defined by every possible demographic, including socioeconomic status, race, neighborhood, and family background. The 16 players and managers on the team came to De La Salle from 15 different grade schools, parochial and public, including every single neighborhood in Minneapolis. And whereas, all six Islander seniors have been accepted to college. During Coach Dave Thorson's career at De La Salle, every single senior matriculated to college. And whereas, in alphabetical order, and I apologize if I mess up your names, I've done it a few years in a row now. The team's roster included J.T. Baker, Dominic Bledsoe, Sage Booker, Christian Dixon, Will Irvin, Ben Jackson, Gabe Kalshor, Malik Lamine, or Laman, Gonar Mar, Raekwon Moore, Tyrell Terry, Brady Thompson, and Julian Wright. And whereas, in alphabetical order, the program's assistant coaching staff included Todd Anderson, Davey Collier, Walter Franklin, Nicholas Gru, C.J. Hallman, Jonell Hallman, Kyle Huggar, Tim Muir, Dan Ribcico, Keaton Rush, and Danny Young. The team managers were Jack Borman, Patrick Podwills, and Naylan Wright. The team's trainer was Cindy Schlaffman, and the strength coach was Chris Hartman. Now therefore, be it resolved by the Minneapolis City Council that the city of Minneapolis congratulates the De La Salle Boys Basketball Team and coaches for winning the 2017 Class AAA State Championship, by the way, for the sixth year in a row. Congratulations. So I'm just going to have, if each one of you want to introduce yourself, your name, as we did when we were eating breakfast, I want to give your favorite subject, and then if you're a senior, where you're headed for next year. All right?
Actually, you can start. And the coaches as well.
I'm Brady Thompson. I'm a junior, and my favorite class is honors chemistry.
Patrick Podwills, sophomore, team manager. Favorite class, I'd say, is bio.
My name is Ben Jackson. I'm a junior, and my favorite class is math.
My name is Dominic Bledsoe. I'm a senior, and my favorite class is English. Going to St. Olaf.
My name is J.T. Baker, and I'm also a senior, and my favorite class is AP English. And next year, I'll be attending Cornell University.
My name is Sage Booker. My favorite class is, I'm a junior, and my favorite class is Principles of Engineering.
I'm Tyrell Terry. I'm a sophomore. My favorite class is Modern World History.
My name is Gonar Mar. I'm a senior. My favorite class is math, and next year I'm going to George Mason.
My name is Naylan Wright. I'm a senior. Next year, I'm going to Grand Canyon University, and my favorite class is calculus.
My name is Jack Borman. I'm a senior manager this year. My favorite class is probably AP Government, and I'm going to Boston College next year.
My name is William Irvin. I'm a senior. My favorite class is AP Government, and then I'm attending Loyola University in Chicago.
Pre-law track.
And going on the pre-law track and going into law school after that.
My name is Adam Pribble. I'm the Activities Director at De La Salle High School. On behalf of De La Salle High School, we want to thank all of City Hall for allowing us to be here and for the distinguished honor. I mean, here and for representing our coaches. And Dave Thorson has moved on to the collegiate ranks, so he's unfortunately not able to be here. But this is always one of his favorite trips, so he wants to extend that thanks as well. I'm going to hand the mic back over to William Irvin. He has something to present to Jacob.
On behalf of De La Salle High School, we love to represent the city and also the Third Ward. And so with that being said, here is a 2016-2017 six feet ball.
Again, I can't tell you how proud I have them all, though. Not just your athletic prowess, but your academic as well. You guys are class acts, and we're so proud to have you in this city. Thanks again.
Just please pass our congratulations on to Dave Thorson, too. Tell him we miss him. Thank you. Thanks. Thank you. Thanks. Now, if we can have the North High Team come up and join us, please, with their coaches. Kind of half on one side and half on the other. I always say this is such a special pleasure for me because Coach McKenzie and I have been friends for a very long time. Our daughters played basketball together since we were trying to decide if it was third grade or fourth grade. And we've shared many, many nights, days on the basketball court. And so it's always fun to see his teams have such great success. And we're very, very proud of North High, the renaissance that's occurring there, and you guys' championship has just been fabulous. So I'm going to turn it over to my colleague, Long Ying.
Thank you, Council President. This is the North High Polers. Thank you all for being here. And I'm going to be quick with this resolution and then say a few comments, and then we're going to have the students introduce themselves and then go all the way from my left to my right here. This is a resolution honoring the 2016-2017 Minneapolis North Community High School Polers Boys Basketball Team. Whereas, the North Community High School Polers Boys Basketball Team won the 2017 Minnesota State Class A Championship on March 25th, defeating Northwoods 96 to 49. And the Polers have won two straight Class A titles. We're going to get to six, though, right? The Polers have won seven state titles and have made 22 state tournament appearances. The Polers finished the season with a 32 and 2 record and were also the city champions and the sectional champions. Minneapolis North Community High School has seen an academic and athletic resurgence since it was threatened with closure in 2010. The resurgence is due to the leadership of Dr. Sean Harris-Berry, the principal, Dr. Leo Lewis III, the athletic director, and other teachers, administrators, and coaches. And whereas, head coach Larry McKenzie took over the struggling basketball program in 2013. And since then, the Polers have won the Minneapolis City Conference Championship four years in a row, from 2013 to 2017. And whereas, the 2016-2017 roster includes, and not everyone's here, but it includes Elijah Campbell, Glenn Carter, Armon Dalton, Nusir Elamin, DeKai Hines, Decoy Hines, Marquise Holloman, Traywan Holloman, who is a seventh grader, Jameer Jackson, Isaac Johnson, Taylor Johnson, Jaquan Sanders-Smith, Zion Sanford, and Odell Wilson IV. And whereas, the coaches of the Boys Basketball Team were head coach Larry McKenzie, assistant coaches Trent Witz, Michael Shelton, Nagasha Jackson, Sherman Patterson, Tyler Slick, and Brandon Mitchell. And they were assisted by student managers Kalen Stevenson and Core Sean Davis. And now therefore, be it resolved by the City Council of the city of Minneapolis, that the City Council on behalf of the people of Minneapolis hereby honors the 2016-2017 Minneapolis North High Polers Boys Basketball Team and gives them the recognition for their outstanding accomplishments. You guys, I followed this team for the past four years, and I just have to tell you, you all have played amazingly well. Coach McKenzie was quoted in the paper saying that, in terms of individual talent, player for player, this has not been, you know, the most talented in terms of what he's seen. But I mean, in terms of team, this is probably one of the best teams that he's coached. And so I got the distinct privilege of seeing that, you know, almost every game this season. And this has been an amazing team for me to see. So thank you all for playing so well, and I'm just so proud of the seniors that are playing for their last, you know, season, and for all the young folks that are, you know, coming up, especially the seventh grader who can dunk. I mean, that's just amazing. So just so proud of you all. And I'm going to pass it on to my very left, and then if you can introduce yourselves and say a few things about yourself, just move it on. Okay? Thank you.
Hello. I'm Decoy Hines, and my favorite subject is physics. I'm in 11th grade.
My name is Armon Dalton, sophomore. Favorite subject will be math.
I'm Taylor Johnson. I'm a junior. My favorite subject is AP US History.
Eli Campbell, sophomore. My favorite subject is US History.
Zias Haffert, junior. My favorite subject is physics.
My name Glenn Carter. I'm a sophomore, and my favorite subject is math.
My name is Jaquan Sanders-Smith. My favorite subject is US History, and I'll be committing to a college in a week or two.
My name is Core Sean Davis, sophomore, and my favorite class is history.
Mike Sheldon, assistant coach.
Larry McKenzie, head coach.
And Leo Lewis, athletic director for Minneapolis Community High School Polers. Yeah, sure would. And thanks to the whole City Council Chairman for having us here. We're getting used to this. We've been here quite often over the last 13 months with two basketball championships and a football championship. So we want that to continue. There's no doubt about that. Certainly on behalf of the entire school, the staff and faculty, and the coaches who put in tireless effort and time to really mentor and lead these young men to greater heights, and we're looking forward to getting even better. Thank you very much.
And I just want to give one last shout out. The thing that folks don't understand about North High School is that they're in Class A because of their enrollment. It's tiny, tiny enrollments, even in North Minneapolis. And the thing that other folks should recognize is just that many of the student athletes up here play several sports, and, you know, we've seen some of these guys before, maybe all of these guys before, because they were part of the state's football championship as well. And so, just amazing. Okay? So thank you so much for being here.
And thanks to all their parents who have helped them through all the years, you know, keep going in their athletic careers and their scholastic careers. Thanks. I'm going to call this regularly scheduled meeting in the Minneapolis City Council to order. Clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Present.
Goodman.
Present.
Frye.
Here.
Paul Masano.
Present.
Gordon.
Here.
Tom Herakano is absent. Reich.
Present.
Bender.
Here.
Liddon.
Here.
Yang.
Here.
Andrew Johnson.
Here.
Quincy.
Here.
President Johnson.
Here.
There are 12 members present.
We have a forum present. Next item, adoption of the agenda. We have a couple additions to the agenda. The first is motion by Councilmember Gordon to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring Annie Young. Is there a second on that motion? Second. It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have a motion by Councilmember Yang to amend the agenda to include, under the Order of Resolutions, a resolution honoring the North Community High School Polers Boys Basketball Team. Is there a second on that motion? Second. It moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Then, any other additions to the agenda? Seeing none, a motion to approve the agenda as amended is in order. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have acceptance of the regular meeting of April 28th, 2017, and the adjourned session held May 3, 2017. So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have referral of petitions, communications, and reports to the proper council committees. So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. The standing committees are next. The first is Community Development Regulatory Services. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Goodman.
Thank you, Madam President. Councilmember Frye, the vice chair, will be giving their report today.
Councilmember Frye.
Thank you, Madam President and Madam Chair. We have 11 items on the agenda for today. The first is the 2017 Consolidated Plan Action Plan. The second is the modification of, to the consolidated TIF district. The third is approving an application for Penny's Coffee. Fourth is the Sunday Liquor Sales Ordinance, allowing liquor to be sold on Sunday. Five is Liquor Business and Gambling Act licenses. Six is a business license operating conditions for Charbel Petroleum. Seven is authorizing an amendment to the existing home loan for Portland Village. East Eight is the passage of a resolution granting approval for Hennepin County Housing and Redevelopment Authority for East Town Apartments Limited. It's for East Town Apartments at 815 South Sixth Street. Number nine is contract amendments with Minnesota Home Ownership Center. Number 10 is an agreement with MHFA to receive and to use the predictive cost model. And number 11 is approving a waiver of the 60-day waiting period for the hazardous property at 4108 Beard Avenue South. I move all 11 items.
Councilmember Frye has moved the Community Development Regulatory Services report. Anyone want to pull any of those items off or discuss any items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Gordon.
Thank you, Madam President. The Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Committee is bringing forward three items for consideration today. The first is accepting a grant from the New Venture Fund for their Healthy Babies Bright Futures Project to reduce neurotoxin chemicals in Minneapolis. Second item is authorizing an increase to a contract with Valvina Jones in the amount of $50,000 to extend the contract through December 31st for maintenance of the city's lead safe house program. And the third item is authorizing an agreement between the city through its Health Department and the Minnesota Department of Health to provide and share data regarding Healthy Start Program in Hennepin County. I'll move all three items forward for approval.
Councilmember Gordon has moved the Health, Environment, and Community Engagement Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Transportation Public Works Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Reich.
Thank you, Madam President. The committee is forwarding 15 items today for approval. Item one is the A Street Southeast Reservicing Project. Item two is the South Bay Area Residential Reservicing Project. Item three is the limited time parking ordinance. Item four is the Special Service District's 2017 Operating Plan and Budget Amendment for 50th Avenue France and 44th and Lindale, Bloomington, et cetera, all those special service districts. Item five is the Emerson North and Fremont North Pedestrian and Bikeway Improvement Project Layout. Item six is Lindale School Crossing Project Safe Ross School Grant Agreement and Terms and Conditions and Maintenance Commitment for that project. Item seven is the 42nd Avenue Street North Reconstruction Project Special Assessment Reduction for 3800 Penn Avenue North. Details are listed. Item eight is the I-35W Lake Street Transit Access Project Supplement Agreement with the Cooperative Agreement with the MnDOT Department related to sanitary sewer design. Item nine is the I-35W Lake Street Transit Access Project Supplement Agreement, and this one relates to the water main design. Item 10 is the biannual routine maintenance agreement with the city of Minneapolis and MnDOT. Item 11 is the Federal Highway Safety Improvement Program Funding. Item 12 is the bid for 18th Avenue Northeast Street Construction Project. The dollar marks listed. Item 13 is the bid for Niclet Island Pump Station Construction Project. Item 14 is the bid for cleaning large diameter sanitary sewer system. All of those are low bids. And then 15 was a great report, and it's the 2017 Drinking Water Week Passage Resolution declaring May 7th through 13th Drinking Water Week in the city of Minneapolis. Madam President, I move all items for approval.
Councilmember Reich has moved the Transportation Public Works Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. And next, we have the Ways and Means Committee Report. That committee is chaired by Councilmember Quincy.
Thank you, Madam President. Ways and Means brings forward nine items for consideration this morning. First five are legal settlements. Item number six is a contract with Go Beyond LLC. Item number seven is a gift acceptance for conference participation at SharePoint Fest DC. Item number eight is the contract with Hennepin Technical College for summer skills class. And the final item, number nine, is a grant, authorizing a grant acceptance from Minnesota Department of Commerce for the Minnesota Auto Theft Prevention Program. I'd like to move all nine items for approval.
Councilmember Quincy has moved the Ways and Means Report. Any discussion on any of those items? Seeing none, clerk call the roll.
Councilmember Worsami.
Aye.
Goodman.
Aye.
Frye.
Aye.
Paul Masano.
Aye.
Gordon.
Aye.
Reich.
Aye.
Bender.
Aye.
Liddon.
Aye.
Yang.
Aye.
Johnson.
Aye.
Quincy.
Aye.
President Johnson.
Aye.
There are 12 ayes.
That report is adopted. Next, we have the Introduction and Referral Calendar. And the first item on that calendar is the Wellington Condominium Housing Improvement Area Ordinance. Councilmember Gordon gave notice and now wishes to introduce the subject matter and ordinance amending the code related to planning and development, housing improvement areas for first reading and referral to CD and Regulatory Services for a public hearing on May 16, 2017, adding a new article entitled Wellington Condominium Housing Improvement Area to establish the area and impose fees to pay for housing improvements within the area. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. And next, we have the Regulation of Telecom Antennas Ordinance. I gave notice at our last meeting and would wish to introduce the subject matter of an ordinance amending the code for first reading and referral to zoning and planning committee amending provisions related to telecom antennas in the right-of-way and general housekeeping of Article 8, communications towers, antennas, and base units. Any discussion on that introduction? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. We have resolutions next. The first is a resolution of 2017 National Alzheimer's Brain Awareness Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? Second one is Make Music Day Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have the 2017 National Police Week Honorary Resolution, passage of a resolution recognizing National Police Week and honoring the service and sacrifice of those law enforcement officers killed in the line of duty while protecting our communities and safeguarding our democracy. And I would mention that all of our police precincts in Minneapolis are having open houses, and you can find information about those open houses on the city's website. Any discussion on that honorary resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. Next, we have the De La Salle High School Boys Basketball 2017 Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye. Aye. Opposed? That carries. And next, we have the Earl Pettiford Honorary Resolution. It's a passage of a resolution honoring Earl Pettiford for his 49 years of service to the City of Minneapolis. I had the pleasure of reading Earl's resolution at a get-together of his fellow workers yesterday and asked the question if he was like the longest-serving city employee, and I'm told there's someone, a lady that works in payroll, that has been with us for 55 years, so he's just a kid. So congratulations to Earl on his retirement. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries. We have the Caring Bridge Honorary Resolution. Any discussion on that resolution? Seeing none, all in approval, say aye.
Aye.